So welcome everyone to the April 12th, 2021. Meeting of the North Coventry Township Board of Supervisors. Joining us this evening on the meeting is Supervisor Rebecca Elliott, Supervisor Spencer Claypool, Supervisor Harvey Greenwall, Vice Chairman Rich Schiller and myself Chairman Jim Marks. Also joining us on the call this evening is our Township Manager Erica Badoff and Township Solicitor Dan Sager. So it's been a while since I've read the disclaimer for, for why we're holding these meetings virtually. So under the State of Emergency Declare, the Governor, municipalities are authorized to hold virtual meetings as long as public comment is possible. And it's recommended that the meetings are recorded and made available to the public, which in both cases are true. Recording of this meeting will be available on our website YouTube channel. Probably by the end of the week. At some point, we're going to be reviewing what our future meetings will look like, whether we return to fully in person or maybe some kind of combination of both virtual and in person. If anybody has any opinions on how we should handle these meetings in the future and what you'd like to see. Drop us an email, let us know and we certainly consider all suggestions and input and appreciate that. It's my expectations that we'll be continuing these meetings, these virtual meetings until the emergency declaration is lifted, which hopefully I would hope would happen sometime in the fall at the latest. And at that point, we'll, we'll see what our future meetings are going to look like. So with that said, we're going to move on with the agenda for this evening. Tonight, we're having a presentation by our auditors. So we rearranged the agenda out of consideration of their time. So we're going to start with that presentation. Joining us tonight from Barbara Kane Thornton and Company is Tim Sawyer and Joe Manfree. Forgive me if I misspoke there, who will provide a brief overview of the 2020 Audit Report.
So thank you for having us. We're here to go over the audit results for your audit for December 31st, 2020. We do have an attendance Joe Manfree, who is a newly promoted supervisor at our firm and he has been in charge of your audit for the last two years. And actually performed your audit for that as well. So we have some good history with you as far as some of the staff goes. I'm going to walk you through a summary of the audit results. I'm going to quickly go over audit timeline or audit approach as far as what an audit entails. Areas of our emphasis while we do the audit. Our results is in, you know, the opinion issue. Couple other matters and then I have a few charts for you that show you some of the financial results of 2020 compared to 2019. Regarding the audit timeline this year, obviously because of the COVID pandemic, we were kind of forced to do the audit remotely. And we did the, most of the field work was done the week of January 18th through the 22nd. Once field work is done, we have some follow-up, chased down some confirmation requests. We also go through our, our internal review process, which includes a partner review, which was myself and then a quality control review. In addition to that, when those are finished and we issue a draft report, which was done in March, Joe and I met with Erica and Kelly. We went over the report and that report was approved in March. And then the report was electronically filed with the state by the April 1st deadline. As far as the audit approach goes, we design our procedures and target certain areas of what we consider greater risk. The approach includes, but it's not limited to inquiries of management of employees. So we also talked to a board supervisor member. We review minutes and various agreements. We look at documentation of your internal control procedures to see if they're operating effectively. We also do an analytical review of activities and account balances. And then of course substantive testing or test of details of your key activities to make sure that your financial statements are fairly presented. When we think about the areas of an audit that we look at, we had, we look at what we refer to as improper revenue recognition or your revenue recognition. Make sure your revenue is fairly stated. A lot of that can be done through third-party confirmation and review of other supporting documents. I will also do third-party confirmations of your cash balances and your debt. And then we also will focus on major vendor payments, any capital outlay expenditures. And we'll focus on payroll, which of course, when you think about the township, you know, payroll and benefits are probably your number one overall expenditure. And then we'll also do a random selection of some other transactions. And that's all entailed in the, the audit and leads us to forming in our, our opinion. As far as the audit results go, in our opinion, we issued an unmodified opinion on your DCD report in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting. So the DCD does allow you to report on the cash basis. And that is how your report is, is done. You may look at the report and you'll notice in there that we issue an adverse opinion in relation to generally accepted accounting principle, prepared financial statements, which would make you record all your accruals, any accounts or accounts receivable, accounts payable. Also record requires you to record fixed assets, et cetera. So we don't do that. We've never done that. But you have a clean audit opinion on your statements as prepared on the basis, cash basis, which is allowed by DCD, which is referred to as the regulatory basis. We also issued a management recommendation letter. There is one thing we had talked with Erica. There was one thing we had put on there. I think the last year when Kevin was on related to a capitalization policy, which would just tell us the threshold of what needs to be reported on the statement of capital expenditures within the DCD report. So we figured with the transition and everything going on, we'll leave it there for one more year. Then you can decide if you want to pursue that or not. And if you want any guidance on what needs to be in there, just, just let us know. We'll be happy to, to assist you. As far as our other matters, I'd like to let you know that management was helpful and forthcoming throughout the order process, got us all the information that we requested from them. We assisted with the preparation of certain journal entries to get some of your balances to the correct amounts, a little bit, some of it had to do with the, the debt. And those were communicated to management and posted into the books and records of the township. We had no waived audit adjustments. And as I mentioned before, we're available year round for any questions that you may have. Looking at the financial results, I give four charts for you. We're going to show you the year-end cash balances between 20 and 19. Your fund balances, major and total revenues and major and total expenditure. Through cash balances, you can see pretty good, fairly consistent. All the cash seemed to go up just a little bit. And the general fund went from 2 million up to 2.3 million. On the special revenue funds went from 6.1 up to 6.3. Your capital projects fund was at 228 and it's at 229. And then your trust and agency funds, which are your pension and escrow related, were at 530 both years. On the fund balance side, you're pretty much, fund balance is pretty much equal to your cash balances with a couple of exceptions. There's is an allowance for a couple of payroll-related liabilities that get transmitted after your, your end. So cash balances are not quite fund balances, but pretty close. So the general fund went from 2 million up to 2.3. Your special revenue funds, you can see here, these balances do agree from 6.1 to 6.3. Capital projects funds again, 228 to 229 and the trust and agencies, 324 to 329, the fund balance and the trust and agency funds is your, your pension account. The difference between the cash and the pension are the escrow accounts, which is of course not township money. Looking at your major and total revenues, again, between the two years, fairly, fairly close. So your real estate taxes, 1.4 million, pretty much close each year. Your EIT went up a little bit from 2 million to 2.1. Your intergovernmental revenues, which includes your grants, et cetera, went from 602 up to 858. Charges for services, 364 to 402. Now your other revenues and sources, you can see big, big decline, 8.3, almost 8.4 million to 1.3, 1.4 million. The biggest difference there was last year, if you can remember, you had the construction loan as well as the USDA loans that, that came in. They're, have to be reported as other financing sources because you're on cash basis. So that's why that number is so large last year. And of course, that also drives the difference between the total revenues of 12.8. The 6.1, you'll also see corresponding variances in the expenditure slide, which we have here. You can see here, so the expenditures are up a little bit in each category, except for public works and debt service. You know, so nothing spectacular there. Some of it's just, you know, general increases in offer salaries and benefits. The public works 4.6 million down to 1 million related to the public works garage that was completed last year. The debt service 3.8 down the four, the 3.8 reflects the payoff of the initial construction loan by the USDA loans. So then of course, you can see the total expenditures also went from 12 million down to 5.6 because of those items related to the loans and the public works garage. So that is your overall quick look at the financial statements. entertain any questions that the, the board may have?
Hearing none. Do we have any questions from the public? Well, we appreciate the, the hard work and, and the presentation tonight. And look forward to a successful 2021.
Okay. If anybody does think of a question, just let Erica know and she'd get ahold of us.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Everybody have a good night.
All right. So moving on with the agenda, we have meeting minutes in your packet was the draft of the March 22nd, 2021 meeting. Do I have any comments or corrections on those meeting minutes? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes in March 22nd, 2021?
So moved.
Spencer makes a motion. Harvey seconds it all in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Bills since our last meeting, three weeks ago, we have unpaid bills totaling 81,346 dollars. And the list of paid bills and payroll totaling 163,965 dollars. Do I have any comments from the board on the bills? None. Do I have any comments from the public on the bills? The list of the bills was posted on the township website over the weekend for public review. If anybody has any questions, please unmute yourself, identify yourself and answer your question now. Hearing done, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the payment of 81,346 dollars and acknowledge the 163,965 dollars of payroll and paid items since the last meeting.
So moved.
Rebecca makes some motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rick seconds it all in favor. I. The bills are paid and acknowledged. Developers bills, anybody have anything on the developers bill? Hearing none. We're going to move on to zoning and subdivision. We have nothing on that topic this evening. So we're going to move on to old business. Okay. So under old business, our roadmaster John McKee has obtained a quote for maintenance to remove the mold contaminated drywall at Perrings Hall for a total cost of 2950 dollars. This work can be completed in two days and the money coming out of the open space maintenance funds. This estimate is for removal of drywall. John, do you want to kind of explain what the process is and, and what's the scope of the work is?
Yeah. So the, the road crew really doesn't have the right PPE to remove the sealing material that has the mold in it. And there's a lot of house droppings. So this, this contractor, you know, that can equip their employees with the proper PPE and ventilation in the building to remove the remaining ceiling materials and insulation so that the architect can take a, a good look at, you know, all the existing features before he dresses bid documents.
And that's, that's the drywall that's shown here in the kitchen area.
Uh, yes. So there's, there's ceiling material, drywall in the kitchen area. There's some in the upper loft area and then also the area underneath the loft on the first floor.
I got questions from the board.
Would we need to pay the contractors the prevailing wage or is that a, a separate contract?
Uh, we don't get to the threshold for that. So on, with this amount, we're good.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So all this drywall here is what's getting torn out here in.
Yeah. There, the, the remaining in the kitchen and also the, uh, the loft area.
That'll, that'll expose like the rafters. So we can see what's going on up in the roof and the insulation and any potential leaks that might be coming in. Is that part of the?
Yeah. I mean, the insulation in the roof area is kind of a moot point. Cause when we did the roof, we put the insulation on the sheathing before the tin went on, an expectation of keeping the roof area open. But I mean, keep in mind, this doesn't include any remediation in the, you know, future that may have to be done.
Right. Any questions from the public? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion to authorize the proposal as presented for a total cost of 2950 dollars with the money coming from the open space maintenance fund.
I'll make that motion.
Spencer makes a motion. Harvey seconds it all in favor.
Hi.
Hi. And I may be a little late, but also the township, will we providing and paying for the dumpster?
Township is providing for that separate from the.
Yeah. Dollars for the dumpster fee.
How much?
Uh, I think the last one, we were around for probably around $400, I'm estimating.
Okay. That would require a motion, correct, Erica?
Yeah, yes. And just to add to that, this does go along with the scope of work that Roadmaster McKee and he had presented at the last meeting. So he is monitoring that. So that was part of the demolition for, you know, the entire project.
Under old business is the authorization to proceed with the boat dock. Coast stars contract with Board Safe to design and construct the Riverside Park Boat Ramp Facility. The contract, the township has coordinated with Michael Lane and Jay Herb regarding the Coast Stars contract with Board Safe to design and construct the proposed boat ramp and dock at Riverside Park. The project is funded by DCNR, River Greenways Association in the Pottstown area, Health and Wellness Foundation due to prevailing wage rates and material costs that have risen due to COVID. Your initial project scope was revised to come in line with the township budget. The revised project scope includes obtaining permits, site engineering and surveying, structural engineering, concrete foundation system and manufactured dock components, including one galvanized steel support deck with railing, one five foot by 54 foot aluminum gangway and two eight foot by 20 foot floating docks. This is on closely of installation. The original proposal included a kayak launch and a second higher deck, which can be included at a later date with the future grant money. So at first thing I'm going to ask to see if anybody has any questions on this project. And questions from the public on the project. Is there a motion to authorize the Coast Stars contract with Board Safe in a total amount of 126,000 dollars?
So moved.
Rebecca makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Spencer seconds it all in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Moving on to new business. Uh, we have resolution numbers 05, 2021. It's a PMRS nine uniform pension plan amendment for 2021. Eric, I'm going to kick this over to you for an explanation.
Certainly. In 2019, the township established a revised plan for our non-uniform pension plan. And when we did that, we had 3.75% as the minimum required contribution for township employees. The PMRS contribution is 4.5%. So through the annual budget process, we review the minimum municipal obligation for the township for, actually for both plans. And then we evaluate the budget needs for the following year. We've kept that for non-uniform to 3.75 for 2021. Uh, we do review our actual reports and our minimum municipal obligation reports as they come in to determine that. So this approval is required because it is actually an effective amendment to the pension plan document that is required to be provided to the board for PMRS on an annual basis. The next time this will be discussed will be again during the budget process for 2022. And we'll evaluate the data as we receive it through our various reports.
Good. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. I'm looking for a motion to authorize this proposal as presented. Motion to approve resolution 05, 2021 PMRS non-uniform pension plan, the amendment for 2021. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Right. Makes a motion to Hartley seconds it all in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Motion passes. Next item is the Coventry Woods Meadow Management Discussion. Erica, I'm going to kick this to you as well. We've been involved in the history of this. So I'm not sure how many of the board members are, are up to speed on this. So if you want to kind of take over and give us a summary of this.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Um, the township owns a property. It's actually 46 acre parcel at Coventry Woods Park off of Jones Road. And since 2010, when we acquired that property, we had a farmer, his name's John Colley, take care of the meadow that is there and essentially farm and cultivate the property for hay. He had done it for several years and that was an arrangement that continued after 2010. Since then, it came to the attention of our committee members that there was herbicide application to this property this past year. So the discussion ensued regarding the, number one, really the history on the use of the property and the, the way the property was acquired. So we did a file review on that. And the property was purchased through DCNR grant funding. And what we also learned was that the farmer, you know, had been doing this for quite some time, but had no exclusive arrangement with the township. Since it was conducted for several years. Moving forward in talking with DCNR, I gained some additional information, learned that the covenant on the property requires the township to essentially, we can't have an exclusive arrangement or lease agreement with a farmer moving forward. It's not permitted. The maintenance, uh, they don't really speak to the maintenance of the property so much so that just generally with any farming practice or arrangement, in addition to that, there cannot be a financial benefit of the farmer or any entity that contracts with a township for the use of the property. So upon reviewing that, the EAC had discussed putting forward a proposal or a recommendation to offer the idea that the, the area, the meadow should really ideally go back to a naturalized state, naturalized meadow. And then Parks and Recreation also commented on it. And you know, really the important thing is that the open space is preserved, the trail access is provided and that the township is watching over the covenant concerning that property. So I have talked with the farmer. They're certainly aware of the issues at hand here for the township. And you know, they, we've not, since it was discussed in committee, I wanted to bring it to your attention because of the timing of farming practices and you know, we're, we're here in April. And you know, trying to, you know, really analyze and look at the whole matter here as a whole. So he has placed fertilizer on this property with intentions to farm this year. He does not intend to place herbicide. I have discussed that with, with the farmer. But it certainly is up to the board, how best to manage the property moving forward. So that, that kind of gives an overview, but I'm certainly open to answer any questions and speak further about this.
Any comments from the board?
If we were to allow him to harvest the hay for this year, since he's already gone ahead and fertilized it, does the township run any risk of any kind of repercussion from our financing lender? Who put the restrictions on to begin with?
I would, Dan, do you have any thoughts on that as far as?
Well, he's not, the township isn't paying. He's right. He's, he's just always doing it. I don't think there's any financial benefit either side is getting frankly out of it. I think it's just doing, yeah, and he's doing a service. He, as a result, the, the township at one point thought that that would be the best use of the maintenance of the, of the area to cut it down and, and somebody needed it for a, it was a good way of getting rid of the, uh, the hay. So no, I don't think it has anything to do with the financial issues, the liabilities.
Hey Jim, it's John Worth. Yeah, actually this, this question might be more to Dan. I, I think that the, and perhaps I haven't seen the exact wording, but if there is a financial benefit to the farmer. So if that farmer is taking hay from this property that was purchased partly with DCNR funds and selling it, that is a financial benefit. Correct?
No, I look at it a different way. I, I don't look at it that he's, he's, I mean, you can look at any kind of use from that hay as a financial benefit. He's feeding his cows or he's selling it to somebody to feed. I mean, possibly. No, I think that the township has to get, correct me if I'm wrong, Erica. I think that that's what the language says, that the township would have to financially benefit from the farmer dealing with the hay.
I think there may be an issue with contract with an entity where where there is a financial benefit from using the land.
Okay.
I think there may be, yeah.
Okay. Then yes, then the farmer, then you're correct, John. You can't, the, the farmer could not sell the hay then.
Well, even if he feeds it to his cows, he's getting a benefit because he's getting feed.
Yes, right. But I don't think that it's defined as to what a financial benefit is. Is it truly monetary or is it indirect? Um, you're right. Like I said, Harvey, you can, you can say anything, uh, any of the transactions, the financial benefit.
Can we get a definition or an interpretation of that from someone?
I don't know why you want to do that though. I mean, at this point, he's, it's one more time. He, I mean, at this point, there's a financial loss to him if he can't farm. And he, I'm sure that the township now, he'll come to the township because he was under the impression that he can put down the fertilizer. Put down the fertilizer, I think, I mean, again, I don't know that the, the timeframe is the one he usually does.
If we have a plan in place that says, because of, you know, the timing and it. Uh, that this is his last year. All they can get us for is the past ten years, right? Back to two oh seven, is that when it was bought?
Two thousand ten, you, yeah.
Okay, so, ten years, he's been farming it. Doing whatever he does with it. And then this year he fertilized, which is a, a large expense. And, uh. So we just, I agree with letting him go this year and documenting it and that's it.
How many more times is he gonna harvest the site?
Be once.
Yeah, once.
Once and done.
Well, not, not necessarily, I mean, hay, hayfields are, can be, can be harvested, you know, two to three times per year depending on. You know, how much rain, um, the conditions, things like that. And, and I do wanna point out that.
Most, most farmers here don't get more than one or maybe two.
Maybe two, right, right.
They, they get two, at least, there have been years where we've bought third cutting hay, so they, they, they do, or in this area, they are able to do that, not every year. But again, keep in mind that one of the reasons this came to our attention is because, you know, we, the, the farmer was going in and spraying with, uh, herbicide. Um, he, he did not inform anyone, much less ask permission to spray herbicide, and this is in our park. And the same for the, you know, the fertilizer application, there was no, you know, informing, much less asking permission, uh, it, it was just, he, he treated it. You know, like his hayfield.
One additional comment. Uh. Despite the background noise, uh. Is, uh, that if we did not have the farmer with the hay. We would have to spend money to maintain that meadow. And one of the biggest benefits is the invasives, uh, are. Substantially precluded from, uh, coming on to the entire meadow. And there are alternatives that, uh, a lot of the conservancies use, such as, uh, uh, native, uh, uh, warm season grasses. And other things that, again, are fairly expensive to install and maintain. So this is a benefit to the township, that it's not spending money in order to, uh, maintain the meadow.
Well, if, if we don't maintain it. And he doesn't farm it, it's gonna be a forest. In five years, you're gonna have trees growing everywhere, become. It, it will become trees, blackberry, bittersweet, all those things that you continually have to keep under control. And that's the way it's gonna go, it's gonna come a forest again in the next twenty, thirty years. It's not gonna be an open meadow unless you mow it.
That, that's one of the alternatives and even in the, uh, there's still a little bit of maintenance there for. You know, letting it grow back to a forest to make sure that the, uh, good trees are gonna grow.
Well, I don't know what you call a good tree, but you're gonna have cherry walnut and, uh, sassafras immediately.
Let's, let's break this down into two steps, the first step is to what to do with the agreement with the farmer. Um, he's already put the herbicide, uh, on the fields, I mean, the, the, one of the biggest concerns, um, in the meetings I attended on this was. The herbicides being, uh, placed on those fields. We've told him that he can't do that anymore in the future, we've stopped it, we can't change the past, it's already down there. Um, so. You know, I, I think my feeling is we give him the benefit of the bargain he, he had, he put the, the, um. He fertilized the land in preparation of harvesting it, we go ahead and let him harvest it this year. And that, um, relationship based on, um. The, the law or rule that, that's in place, then, um. Parks and Rec or EAC or, or commissions can then determine what, if anything, we're gonna do with that field going forward. Including how to pay for managing that field in the future.
And as we're doing that. We, Dan investigates fully what the meaning of, uh. What is it, profit or?
Financial.
Financial gain. I'd like to have a thorough explanation of what that means.
That's fine, yeah, Erica, if you can send it to me, I'll look at it and. I, I think that my recommendation is you do that, you make the decision and maybe the EAC and REC come back to you. In a couple few months, as to what they propose and, and, and a, and maybe even a budget as to what it would cost to, to maintain this property, it's a significant property. And if it's what Chris is saying, I think there's gonna be significant cost to the township as well. But, which is your discretion, but you have to understand what's o- out there. So I, that's my recommendation.
I agree with Jim's proposal. To let him farm it out for the, the rest of the year and then revisit it, get the, uh, get the different proposals from the different committees.
And get, and get the definition of what. They're talking about in the, uh, contract. That we signed to get the money for.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll, I'll look at that, that'll be, that, that's no problem.
Okay, so is there a motion to allow the farmer, John Colley, to farm for the twenty twenty-one season with the condition that no herbicide? Uh, no additional herbicide is applied and upon fulfilling, uh, the season ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one?
Jim, Jim, I apologize for interrupting.
Sure, that's fine.
Could we add to that motion, I, I'm in agreement with that, but could we add to that, that, you know, not only no herbicide, but how about no pesticide? And no additional, uh, fertilizing?
How about no anything?
That, that's perfect, Rick.
Okay, nothing other than, than, uh, harvesting it be done, no other application of any kind of product whatsoever.
Perfect.
Okay.
I'm in support of that.
Do I have that motion?
So move.
Rick makes a motion, do I have a second? I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion passes, alright, so the, the vote was four to one. Alright, very good, thank you, uh, moving on to the next, uh, two, next two agenda items, uh, are regarding the police department, so Matt, I'm gonna turn both these over to you. Um, it's, one is, the first is the general order two point four point two. The use of motors, uh, vehicle recorders and body worn cameras. Uh, the second one is a grant application requesting funding for in-car cameras and a server, so wanted to kick us off on both of those.
Sure, yeah, thanks, Jim, um, yeah, regarding the, uh, first one regarding the, uh, general order, uh, two, four, two. Uh, this is a, uh, a general order that, um, has been in place with the police department, is just being updated. Um, to now include the, the section regarding, uh, body worn cameras, so. Um, it, there was, uh, revamped quite a bit, um, because of, uh, changes over the years and, uh. Uh, just the inclusion of, uh, body worn cameras into this, uh, into this general order, um, but, um. It, it was something that was already, uh, established here with the police department, when, when we had the, uh, uh, recorders placed in our cars, um. When that was put in several years ago, uh, so, um, I'm asking for, uh, uh, authorization to approve this, uh. The, uh, the updated, uh, policy with that, and, uh, the second point, um, is in conjunction with this, um. Back in the end of last year, I can't remember if it was November, December, I, I, uh, sat in on a meeting. Um, with, uh, Senator Katie Moose and, uh, I spoke with her about, um. Uh, some of the issues that, uh, that the police departments were certainly concerned about, uh, moving forward, uh, one being the, the issue with, um. Body worn cameras and just, uh, recordings, um, made by police departments, obviously, uh, from all the, the, uh, the events that have happened over the past year. Um, you know, that is certainly one of the hot topics, um, and I, I spoke with her and asked her if she was aware of any type of funding that would be coming out in twenty twenty-one. Um, to help, uh, offset the cost of that, uh, at that point in time, uh, she wasn't aware of anything. And, uh, but I did give her my, uh, my information and, uh, left it there with her staff. Um, I didn't hear anything until about the end of, end of February and, uh, at that point in time, uh, representative from her office, uh, reached out to me and said, there's this. This, this grant, um, that is, um, out there for fifty thousand dollars, uh, from the, uh. CDC, um, uh, which, which I was given information on and, and, uh, began to fill out the, uh, the application for that grant money. Um, and, uh, that is, the, the, the grant has been, uh, uh, or, excuse me, the application has been filled out and just waiting for approval for that in order to. To use that fifty thousand dollars, uh, to go towards upgrading our, um. Our in-car camera system as well as a server, um, we did get quotes from WatchGuard who, who we currently use for our, uh, recordings. Um, and, uh, they gave us a quote, which I, uh, did provide to the, to the board as far as what the cost would be for the, the, uh, the body cameras separately and, and then also the in-car cameras and the, uh, the new server. So, um, those are quotes that I had, I had received from, uh, from WatchGuard. Uh, since, since I sent the email over to you, I've been in contact with, uh, the salesman from WatchGuard. Um, and, uh, and was advised, talking to him that there still could be some movement on the total cost of everything to be done. Um, so finally, instead of just playing phone tag with the, with the salesman, I asked him if he could come in and have a, sit down with us and talk to us. So he is actually gonna come and meet with, meet with us, uh, the first, uh, week in May and, uh, we'll sit down and talk to him and, and get, uh, an exact figure. Um, so I'm hoping it'll be a little bit less than, than what is quoted there, but, uh, um. I don't know how much less it would be, but hopefully be at least a little bit less.
Okay, so, um, we need a motion, Erica, we need a motion for the, um, general order, right, first?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so we need a motion to authorize the approval of general order two, four, two, use of motor vehicle recorders and body worn cameras, do I have that motion?
Yes, I'll make it.
And to make some, Hartley seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, okay, motion passes, and as far as the grant application, do I, any questions, does the board have any questions for the chief fund, any, and things you just covered?
No, the only thing I would ask as far as the grant and the total costs is, um. So you don't have a, a bottom dollar exactly what it's gonna cost the township out of pocket? Because you don't know what the final number is yet for the, the total package, is that what I heard from you?
That, that's correct, yeah, I, I'm, I'm hoping it would be a little bit less than, than what was, uh, quoted there, um, just from. Talking with the, with the salesman again, uh, on the phone, uh, he, he says he's been running, uh, from police department to police department in New Jersey because of. Them having the need to have, uh, body cams set up, uh, in, in departments in Jersey, uh, by May, so he's. He said he's, he's just on the go all the time, so he hasn't really sat down, uh, and, and I guess had an opportunity to really look and discuss our figures, but, um. He, he, he said that if we're able to combine both the body worn cameras and the in-car camera. And the server into a, into one package, that it, that would be the, uh, the best price that he could give us if he did it that way, so. Uh, I did check with the, the grants and, uh, they were okay with having that one, that one quote and being able to split that up between the two grants, one that we, uh, currently have already. Um, that's ready to go for a purchase, uh, for the body worn cameras and then the one that, uh, I'm asking for approval here, um, coming from the, uh, CDC.
Keith, if I may, um, essentially, this is the project budget that is submitted to DCED at this point. So that they can see the full scope of the project and be able to look at that, um. And approve that, hopefully, you know, at, going through that process, is that, that's right? It would just essentially then help model the budget.
A- as far as, uh, the, the outline, yes, I did, yeah, and that, 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 that is correct, yeah, like I said, I, I don't think the, the numbers are really going to break down. Or, or be reduced, uh, too much more, um, but, uh, wh- whatever extra savings we can get, we'll, we'll certainly try to get that in our meeting in, uh, in May.
And, and chief, are you, are you def- definitively getting the grant or, or is that still out there?
That, the, the fifty thousand dollar one is, is still out there.
So is this motion, it's conditioned on the grant being given to you, right? You're not asking for a, a greater contribution if you don't get the grant or it's lesser dollars?
No, if, if we don't get the grant, we, we're gonna have to find a different way to, uh, to get the help to do the cameras.
Alright, so Dan, we're gonna make an au- a motion to authorize the grant application to seek fifty thousand dollars towards the cost of the in-car cameras and server. And then the separate, um, motion for the local, for our local share, which will be contingent upon getting that, that grant, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to authorize the DCED grant application to seek fifty thousand dollars towards the cost of the in-car cameras and server.
So move.
Second.
Rebecca makes a motion, Harvey seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a second motion to authorize the township to provide the local share of funding. Condition upon approval of the DCED grant application. In the amount of, and we leave in these amounts as stated here, or are we? Not, uh, not to exceed, what's?
Well, typically, if I may, uh, h- help with that, just typically for, um, a grant application, the total project budget that goes into DCED. Will include the total quote amount, and so whatever's, you know, not provided through that grant will appear to be the local match that you certify in the application. So if that does change, it would be provided in that, i- if the grant is received through the contract development with DCED. I believe.
So, so it should be not to exceed?
Yes.
Right, okay, so a motion to authorize the township to bu- provide the local share of funding contingent upon receipt of the DCED grant application in an amount not to exceed. Fifty-two hundred dollars for the body worn cameras and fourteen thousand five hundred dollars towards the in-car cameras and server. Do I have that motion?
So move.
So makes a motion, Harvey seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's passed. Thanks, chief, and while you're, uh, on the hotspot, we're gonna move into administration and the first thing is, uh, police report, the, uh. Uh, police report was sent out to the supervisors last week, does anybody have any comments or correct, your questions on the, the, uh, police report?
No.
I was with the, with the, uh, report from Tridifern about our assistance in finding the, uh, thieves that took the cell phone. But that was a, a really good commendation, so congratulations on that recognition.
Thank you very much, thank you, yes, it was nice.
Matt, do you have anything additionally you wanna add? Matt, do you have anything additionally you want to add above and beyond just the police report?
Well, just a couple of things, just to keep the board aware, it's kind of where we stand on a couple of events that are being planned over the next couple of months. The police department has been speaking with the fire company regarding the Norco fair. At this point in time, there's been two fairs that have been discussed, one occurring in May, the week of the 10th through the 16th, and then the, I guess I could say the normal time fair, the one that happens at the end of June. I believe it's the June 28th, running through July 3rd. The one that is currently in May is being planned as a partial fair with not as many rides, more geared towards the younger kids and those types of rides. They will have a couple larger ones there, but like I said, it's mostly going to gear for the younger age kids. So we're busy with that, planning for that, those two events that come in. And one of the things that I've been talking about with the guys here in the department is just being able to maybe finding ways to connect to the community a little bit more. And we're trying to line up something with kind of like a meet and greet or where they had the the coffee and cops kind of shops kind of thing where we could get together with the community. And we reached out to the Coventry Ice Cream Parlor and just kind of like did a preliminary check to make sure if he was okay, if we were down there just to meet the public and just be out there, just to answer any questions that people may have. And he was in favor of that. And so we're going to proceed with setting something that up over the summer months here, I think.
Road report last week, John sent out the road report. Does the board have any comments or questions on the report that was sent out? And John, how about you? Do you have anything you want to report? Add to your report or above and beyond what your report is? How's things going? Growing season is coming or to your?
We cut for the first time last week, so we're getting into our busy season and, you know, we're happy to for this time of the year. So outside full-time other than rain days and gearing up for a big road season.
Yeah, with all this rain, you're going to be cutting a lot of grass in the next few months. Hey, thanks, John. Manager's report, Erica.
Thank you. I had a report on an update with the tax season. As you likely know, on the federal income tax side, in the IRS, PA Department of Revenue extended the tax filing deadline from April 15th to May 17th of this year. There was a PA House Bill 766 that called for an official change for the earned income tax filing to match federal and state deadlines. While that is being worked out, the Chester County Tax Collection Commission is supporting a waiver of penalty and interest related to those returns as long as those returns are filed by May 17th of this year. Also, the report changed a little bit as there was not as much of an update on vaccines until very late Friday over the weekend. The entire Commonwealth now is now accepting everyone regarding the vaccine phasing. And so vaccines are available to adults 16 and over. The Chester County Health Department has set up clinics for free vaccination. Please check out their site if you are interested. There's a lot of updated information that came out over the weekend in that regard. The Township Newsletter, the Spring Newsletter is out. It will be hopefully in mailboxes here soon. We're happy to also announce that the township received an award through PSATs. We won a citizen communication contest for most improved newsletter. We received first place in the category across the Commonwealth. And there were, let's see here, 36 townships with 104 entries. And we submitted for the website and for social media and look forward to do what we can to always ensure that, you know, communications and we're responding to you know, the community's needs, especially during such times. So that was nice. In addition, happy to report, there is a transition taking place in a selection for the Pottstown Area Recreation Coordinator position. It's actually re-termed planner rather than coordinator. Patricia McCloskey has been selected by the Park Board as a new park planner and replaces Michael Lane. Michael Lane is retiring at the end of this month. So Patricia, I think she goes by Tricia. She'll be meeting with the township and various other townships certainly to go over all the projects and see all the properties involved with our townships. Last item, I did receive a notice from Chester County Solid Waste Authority that they have distributed a whole schedule of hazardous household waste residential events. So we'll post that notice on our township website and put that information out. And it's good to see some things coming back. So that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Congratulations on the newsletter. You did a fantastic job on that. You set that bar pretty high. Expect a better version next year.
We'll see, we'll see.
Really good job.
Good job. Patricia McCloskey's background.
Patricia McCloskey, she works for, worked for as a planner for a recreational mountain biking contingent. I forget, I want to say in the Lehigh Valley. I think she's from Lehigh Valley. And so she's been in recreation, been a certified planner, worked for various engineering firms for several years. So she has a recreation mindset, works with municipalities. And, you know, the good thing about that is that she is a certified planner. And she was definitely well received by the group that conducted the interviews.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
A quick housekeeping, the press release that PSATs provided for the newsletter, that was a PDF file, but I couldn't get, I couldn't copy and paste off of it to post it on the website and also social media. Do you have a different version or something that?
Huh, I can find something, sure.
Yeah, see if you can look because
Yeah.
The PDF is almost like an image.
Oh, I see, okay.
I couldn't grab the words off of it, so.
Sure.
It's on page 47 of the April PSAT magazine.
Well, Spencer, there you go.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten there yet. All right, good, good.
And a picture of a little thumbnail of the newsletters in there as well.
Oh, nice, okay. I'll have to check that out.
All right, Supervisors' Report. Rebecca, anything for the board?
No, not today. Thank you.
Rick, anything?
No, nothing from me.
Harv?
Nothing.
Spencer?
I just had one thing. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to bring it up now or not, but I had a memo here about the Ashwood Apartments. And my question is, when they submit their plan for what they're going to do there, will we have room for open space to require that of the new plan?
Erica, you want to respond?
Yes, they essentially have filed their demolition permit, which has commenced with activities at Ashwood Apartments, just for everyone's benefit to rebuild the multifamily housing that had existed. The non-conforming, existing non-conforming use for multifamily is retained within the zoning because of the fire, because of that issue. So that is part of the zoning. And so they are moving forward with that plan so they can continue that same layout and footprint. They do have to meet all new building code requirements in their proposed plan, which we have not seen yet. So I understand they, part of their demolition is they're cleaning up the site. They're working with a structural engineer on testing the walls and the soundness and material, if there are any adverse effects that they can't retain some of that with the project as they continue. So we'll have to see what we can do, but they have that existing non-conformity for the same use. And so that's what they're planning to do.
They are going to have to connect to public waters, I would think, for the
Right.
For the new codes that they're going to have to follow.
I know they have met with the authorities, so.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Sure.
Anything else, Spencer?
No, not tonight.
Okay, all right. I do have something I want to bring forward because it's, to me, a pretty big issue that needs to be addressed. And I actually spoke to Erica and I know she's been speaking to Mike in zoning. I want to show the photo here first. Lowe's, some of you remember. You know, Lowe's went through land development, I should say Newman back then went through a land development plan. Part of the land development was that the stores could not use the outside parking areas for storage of their products. Lowe's has just completely disregarded the land development plan and is doing whatever they want on that site. They've turned it into a lumberyard. I asked Erica to have Mike reach out and send letters on this because this is just beyond abusive. And they need to be held accountable for the agreement that they entered into back in 2005. They've got lumber, they've got trailers, they got the tons and tons just from the first parking lot to the last parking lot of mulch lining up in this parking area. Taken away parking spots, they put their lawn and garden out, using up all these parking spots. And this guy has to be cleaned up and has to be stopped. You know, for the first 10 years, Lowe's would bring in their materials every single night. The grills and lawn mowers that were out front were wheeled into the building before closing every single night. And parking lots and sidewalks were clear. And this is just outrageous, so. I don't know if we need our solicitor involved here, but this is just this can't continue, especially when you consider we're trying to hold the Coventry Mall to a standard. But in our backyard right here at Lowe's, they're doing whatever they want to do. So Dan, if you can weigh in, Erica.
Right, sure, yes. And a notice of violation was submitted last week. They have 15 days to cure the issues. The zoning officer did hear from the manager late last week. And we may need Solicitor Sager moving forward a bit, unfortunately. So the reception to that was not, not a good one, so.
So then, Dan, can you get involved here? Sure, sure. Erica, I think what you should do is give me who you spoke with and what their issues are and why they think they're entitled to do what they're doing.
Sure.
And we'll go forward with that. And the 15 days transpires when?
I have it up here. I'll take a look and I'll send you a follow-up because it was the zoning officer who had the direct conversation. But yeah, I think there's some motivation needed or intervention.
These orders were taken March 27th. I was drove through there over the weekend and it's worse than what it was a month ago or almost a month ago, I guess, two weeks. All right, thank you, Dan. Sure. Solicitor Report, Dan? Yes, we had a staff meeting, as you know, last week with respect to Pennmark, which owns the Coventry Mall. And specifically, we started with the purpose of the staff meeting was basically because of the credit union had come to the board for a variance request based on the fact that they wanted to subdivide, the mall was going to subdivide a portion of what is now what was, I should say, was the Bank of America site. And they were going to buy that property from the mall. And the board took the position that they need to have a little bit more of a plan, the mall that is, before it would entertain something of that nature. And the point, purpose of the, of the, of the meeting was to get a better idea from the Coventry Mall as to what their plans were. We had had a staff meeting, a similar staff meeting last year around this time. And we were to look at the comprehensive plans and do a little bit more specifics with respect to that. Unfortunately, they didn't do much between May of last year and April of this year. I think they recognize now what the alleged, at least they say they did, that's the, that's what they said after the meeting. The meeting was a little bit adversarial, I should say, but I did hear from them after the fact and they seemed to understand that they need to be a little bit more proactive as to what the planning needs to be in order for them to move forward. With respect to the credit union matter, the credit union does not have an interest in just being a tenant or a condo, that was one point that was floated out to them as well. And so at this point, the credit union is probably not going to proceed. The variance is going to be denied, I would suspect, because they're not going to be able to subdivide. There's no need for them to have a variance, frankly. I don't understand why that would need to be done if it was subdivided correctly. So I don't think they're going to follow through with the variance. And I'm not so sure whether they're going to follow through with the actual purchase or being a tenant within the mall as well. But that's where we are at this point. So the ball's in the mall's court again as to where we are with that. That's pretty much all I have.
And you don't take it to a tripody?
Tripody, we're waiting for the Supreme Court to hopefully deny certiorari. And then it would go back to the common law court on our application to allow the sale of the property. So that's where we are. Hopefully, we'll hear from them soon. Okay, thank you, Dan. Public comment, some portion of the meeting where the public gets to comment. If you have a comment, please unmute yourself, identify yourself and state your comment.
Hey, Jim, it's John Worth. One of the things I wanted to say is, well, one, thanks for promoting the plastic film recycling program through Facebook. We've had a really good response from our residents. Last month, we collected 230 pounds of material. This month, we're already on track to collect about the same. I think we're at about 100 and 110, you know, and we're only less than halfway through the month. So we're likely to be able to earn a park bench within just over two months. So good news. Thanks for the continuing promotion. And then the second thing I wanted to mention is that we do have another EAC webinar coming up. Phoebe Robb will be presenting on April 21st about spring planting and pruning of trees and shrubs. So hopefully we'll get that. And she is a master gardener, so she really knows her stuff. And we'd love to see that announced and promoted as you've done with all the previous ones.
Sure, will do. I just wrote myself a note. Any other public comment? Have anything from any of our boards and commissions? I'm not going to go around the horn tonight since our meetings run a little long. But if anybody has anything they want to bring forward, please do so.
Hey, Jim, it's Patty Worth. I just I just wanted to throw out a comment, and this is particularly to Rick because I know he was a big proponent of the playground at Riverbend Park. I've been getting some feedback from users of the playground there. And it is hands down their children's favorite playground in the area. So we've gotten great, great reviews. So we've gotten great, great reviews, um, and we'll be glad when, you know, we can more fully advertise the opening of it. So thanks for all your support in, in having that installed.
Great. Thank you, Patty, for all your hard work. Anyone else? Last chance, public comment?
Hi Jim, Cynthia Lawrence. I just wanted to mention that, um, moving forward, whether or not COVID is an event, I've been really appreciating the Zoom option for these meetings. So I appreciate if they would remain, um, for, for, uh, for example, I have children, so it's hard for me to get out of the house. So thanks.
Sorry, you're welcome. I appreciate that. You know, it's interesting. When I look back at the attendance and tonight we had twenty-two people on at the peak. Um, I, I mean, our, our attendance far exceeds what we would do normally typically in a, in, in the in-person setting. You know, our, our first few meetings, I think we were around fifty or so through the summer mid twenties. Um, and that seems to be about our average twenty-five to the thirty people. And it's a really a great way. Um, not only to reach people live, but then to record, uh, the meetings as well. I was thinking this morning that, you know, a hundred years from right now, um, somebody could sit down and go to YouTube or whatever that looks like in a hundred years, pull up this meeting and really get a glimpse of what twenty twenty-one was like. And what, and the things we focused on. I can only imagine what it would be like today to sit, pull up a, a, a meeting from nineteen twenty-one and see what, um, that lifestyle was and, and the issues that those people were, were facing. So i- it's eye opening. This, this Zoom thing is really eye opening. There's a lot of potential to it. I don't want it to go away. Um, there is questions whether it's even permissible once we're outside the emergency declaration. Uh, but I sure hope they allow it in some form. It won't be a challenge once we get into the room for, for, you know, audio equipment to record people. Um, so maybe we, you know, maybe we do something where one meeting a month in person, one meeting a month is Zoom, something, some kind of hybrid thing. But, uh, uh, I'm, it's, I'm curious to see what happens and how we move forward, but I, I certainly appreciate the, the comments. Anybody else? None at this time. Um, I am, without objection, going to adjourn the meeting. Uh, nothing else left for the evening. Uh, our next meeting, April twenty-sixth. Um, check the website for the Zoom link. Um, check our YouTube channel websites for the recording of this meeting and our meeting minutes, uh, in the next few days. So we'll see everybody in a couple of weeks. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.